Call the meeting to order, City Council Meeting Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. Welcome, everyone, first of the year. Welcome, new council, welcome council, to the meeting. All council are present. First, business is swearing in of mayor and city council. And I didn't really ask if the clerk was going to do it or that...
However you want.
Are you going to do it?
I don't have any words.
Yeah, it's you.
Okay, okay, well, if you would all like to... What do you want to do, stand? Elected officials? Everybody up? Okay, good. Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sylvia.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Of the office of city councilor/mayor
Of the office of city councilor
In the city of University Heights
In the city of University Heights
As now or hereafter required by law
As now or hereafter required by law
Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, we have approval of a lot of minutes. Steve was able to get his minutes in, and so, if it's okay, I'd like to approve them all in a bunch, in the whole bunch. We have approval of minutes for November 30th, December 4th, December 12th, December 21st, and December 28th. Are there any objections to approving the minutes? Are there any additions or corrections to any of the following minutes?
Madam Mayor, can I just take three minutes to peruse and then lob me down?
Okay. The copies of the minutes are at the desk when you come in, and I was able to look them all over. There's no objections, additions, hearing none. The minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, we have some public here today. Thank you for coming. Would anyone like to speak? Oh, I see Jase Humphrey has signed up to speak. Would you like to start it off, Jase?
Sure.
Thank you. The podium's over here now.
Jase Humphrey, 27, Prospect Place. So, I have a habit of going over the agenda generally on Monday, and yesterday I saw that the Conflict of Interest Form was back on the agenda. In my hope, I thought this had something to do with pushing for a Code of Conduct for the council to improve council relations with each other, as well as the community. Today, when I looked back, I found that I was highly disappointed because what we're doing is rolling it back. In the candidate forum, Councilwoman Casada said that she had pushed for transparency and that one of her achievements in her last term of office was that she built consensus and got a Conflict of Interest Form passed. Okay. We spent six months, from April to November, arguing over the conflict of interest, the wording that was placed in it, and how it would be applied. If you look at the Conflict of Interest Resolution that's amending the current one, it is most similar to the very original version that was proposed in April. So, my problem here is, what happened to that consensus? Why did we waste six months of time so that as soon as we had a new council, Councilwoman Casada could attempt to roll things back to get the way she wanted? The wording in the current Conflict of Interest is fine. I find it to be superfluous and useless, but it's there. The one that's being pushed for now is nothing but a political trap. It's nothing but something that somebody has some tool to attempt to use to cause problems. Under the new form, I want to make very clear that if you state you have a conflict of interest, if you declare it, you're then censured. You can't talk, you can't participate in anything. So, this leads into a couple of questions. Dottie, you own property, so does that mean you can no longer take part in any of the discussions that have to do with zoning and rental?
I think the purpose of the amended version is similar to that that I have experienced in the multiplicity of boards that I have been a member of. And if you have a conflict, you state it, you recuse yourself, you do not participate in the discussion under any circumstances because there is a possibility that you would influence, and that is not the intent of the statute. So, I think that initially it was proposed similar to the way it is the amended version, but I believe it was Jerry that threw a fit about not wanting it that way because he wanted to participate for his own interest. So, I think that the version, the way it is amended, is the way I am familiar with it to be. So, if I had a conflict, I would recuse myself.
I appreciate your vision on this. I still massively disagree. I still find it to be yet one more political ploy, and I find it to be a waste of time.
Would anyone else like to speak to the council? Okay, we'll go on to One University Place, Construction and Updates. Now, I don't see Jeff Maxwell here right now. Is he not here? He said he was coming, so maybe he'll come a little bit later. You know, maybe he's running a little late. So, we'll go on to Mayor's Report, and I submitted a written Mayor's Report, and it has council assignments and appointments, and everyone has a copy. It's before you. I don't think I need to reread those, but the appointments are Board of Adjustment is Clayton Hargrave, and Tree Board is Jim Bradley, and Zoning Commission is Larry Wilson. They've all agreed to be reappointed, and some of them haven't served a full five-year term. And I put that before you. It's consideration of Resolution Number 1801, ratifying the mayor's appointments to the Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustment, and Tree Board. Is there a motion?
I'll motion to adopt the mayor's appointments.
Okay. Motion by Sylvia, and second by Dottie. Discussion, consideration of resolution... Roll call vote.
Maher.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, then, thank you. And then I have, what I want to talk about is my mayor's MVP announcements for last year, 2017, and Scott and Carol Ann Christensen and Pat Yegi of the University Heights Garden Club. You know, that city garden every year is one of the most beautiful gardens in Johnson County, and I hear things from people all the time about that beautiful garden, in and out of University Heights. People going through just tell me how beautiful it is, and, you know, they do everything by donation, so please donate to the garden club. And Pat Yegi's here tonight, and I want to thank them with a little gift card. And Pat, would you come up so people can see you on camera, too? And then you can give the gift card to Carol Ann and Scott. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Our reward is that people enjoy it. That's really all we want from them, but we do thank you for this.
Oh, that's nice, Pat. Thank you. And then Rich Retman for his volunteer service for raising and lowering the flag at Triangle Park. And I know that, you know, like, well, can't somebody do that? But it's very hard to do it in a timely manner, and Rich has volunteered so that it would be appropriate with all the flags in all the other cities. And, you know, he and his wife have lived in University Heights for a long, long time, and they moved over to the Hendrickson Lytham Development on Lemur, but they still come and volunteer, and we really appreciate them doing that, too. And I'll give them a gift card to their favorite place, too. Okay, yeah. And then, I did want to point out in this, for sanitation, that cardboard has been banned from the Iowa City landfill, and that means you just recycle it, you don't put it in garbage. And I just wanted to point that out. It's a very common practice for other landfills, and Iowa City's now following it. So, I wanted people to know if they were leaving boxes or things, they won't pick them up, but they will recycle them. You can recycle them. Then, I wanted to go to the agenda and talk about consideration to change a date of March regular city council meeting. And, you know, Iowa City Schools has changed their, in recent years, has changed their, what do you call that, their spring break to the second, and I guess the university probably did it first, but, you know, did it at the same time. So, it runs during our meeting. And I know some people, it's difficult. They want to do things with their children and things. So, I was looking at the dates, and because we have to have the budget in by March 15th, we can't do it on the 20th. We'd have to do it on the 6th of March for budget purposes.
Mm-hmm.
So, how would the 6th be for everyone? And I know it's better for Steve Anderson, our new video guy, because he wanted to do something with spring break, I understand. So, would that work for you, too, Steve? Thumbs up. And so, does that work for... Somebody say it works for me.
It works for me.
Okay, good.
Works for me.
Works for you. No problem here.
Okay, that's good. So...
So, March 6th?
March 6th will be the regular city council meeting. And then we'll go down to consideration of Resolution 1802, accepting the resignation of council member Noah Hughes. And Steve, you might say a few words.
Yeah, sure. I think that Noah, well, Noah was here, wasn't he?
He was here in...
December?
November, December.
Anyway, Noah and his family moved from the city, I think shortly after the election, and so he resigned. He took his oath of office and then resigned effective today. So, the Resolution 1802 accepts his resignation, and then the council has a couple of other agenda items, and I addressed in my report how the council, what options the council has to go about filling that vacancy. But the first issue, or the first consideration matter before you is simply to accept Noah's resignation.
So, is there a motion?
I motion to accept Noah Hughes's resignation.
Okay, motion by Sylvia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Is it okay to call you Nick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And discussion, roll call vote.
Moore.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Carrie.
And then, as Steve said, he has a couple of agenda items, consideration of Resolution 1803, giving notice to the city council's contention to fill the vacancy created by council member Hughes resignation by appointment. So, that's the first resolution before you.
Yes. May I... So, I hope that my report was, that you could follow it. It's a little tricky, the way the code reads, but the council's first big choices are, do you want to, do you want to fill this vacancy by appointing someone, or do you want to call a special election? If you want to fill it by appointment, it takes three votes to make the decision to fill it. That's what 1803 says, is we're going to fill this vacancy by appointment. If the council adopts 1803, then there's a publication, which I circulated, that would be published in The Press Citizen, and as I said in my report, you know, the date that's in that publication, that the council would consider applications and vote to appoint someone at the next meeting on February 13th. The council doesn't have to wait till February 13th. The council could hold a special meeting, but that's how I drafted it. So, if the council intends to fill the vacancy by appointment, it would make that decision tonight, and that's a further if it wants to. The council has 60 days from today, which is Noah's effective date of resignation. The council has 60 days to fill the vacancy, okay? If the council doesn't take any action in 60 days, then a special election will be If the council intends to fill the vacancy by appointment, and I'm just going to say adopts a resolution to that effect tonight, then the next thing that would happen is this notice of intent to fill by appointment would be published in the paper. It would be posted here at the city hall. Interested people could submit their application materials. The council, either at its next regular meeting or whatever meeting it wants to put in the notice, would consider applications, hear from candidates, and vote on the replacement. It would take a three, a vote of three members of the council to appoint someone. If the council intends to fill the vacancy by appointment and adopts a resolution to that effect, then a special election can still be triggered if a petition is submitted by 44 members of the community, voting members, okay? Eligible electors.
Forty-four?
Forty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And the deadline for submitting that kind of an application to trigger a special election, even if the council wants to fill by vacancy, the deadline is 14 days from the date the notice is published in the paper. So, if the council adopted something tonight, Saturday or Monday, it would probably be published. So, 14 days from that date, people could submit a petition, or 14 days from the appointment, okay? I think the idea of the code is that if citizens were sufficiently dissatisfied with a council's decision to appoint, then they could go get their petition on file as soon as the council said they were going to appoint. If the citizens took the view that, well, maybe we'll see who they appoint before we decide if we want to object to the appointment, they get 14 days after the actual appointment to submit that petition, which would trigger a special election, okay? So, that's the most of option one, filling the vacancy by appointment, and that's Resolution 1803. Then Resolution 1804 is the second option, which is to not fill by appointment, but just to schedule a special election. If the council adopts 1804 and intends to fill the vacancy by special election, then that'll be communicated to the auditor. Because University Heights is a primary city, we have to give the auditor 60 days' notice. So, if we give notice tomorrow to the auditor, for example, you know, the soonest, roughly speaking, that an election will be held would be, like, you know, March, I don't know, 10th. The auditor has a calendar, and because they have some, I think, training or statewide meeting or something, they wouldn't do it quite then. They would probably do it, I think, on March 20th would be the election date. That would give the auditor, and the city, and the community time to receive nominations, nomination papers, and determine whether a primary would be needed. Because the vacancy amounts to one seat, if two people ran, then there would just be a special election in March 20 or whenever. If three people ran, then there would have to be a primary. That would be scheduled four weeks in advance of the election, so, you know, we're talking roughly February 20. So, there'd be a primary, and then the election, okay? So, that's generally how the special election process would work, and then it gets kind of complicated.
And I know you said some of this in your report. The earliest the election could be is March 20th, but Carrie Neerling, the deputy auditor, said the election could be March 20th, March 27th, or April 3rd. She didn't want it to go past April 3rd because of primaries coming up, and so, there's some choices in there.
There are some choices, and then there's some additional rules. So, because there is a, because this is an election year, a statewide election year, there's a primary, not a city primary, but a state and national election primary that will be held June 5, I believe it is, of this year. And because the auditor's offices are awful busy dealing with primary elections, the code gives them a little breathing room from things like city special elections, okay? So, it's kind of a jigsaw puzzle. Since we're a primary city, when we give the auditor notice of a special election, as I said, we have to give 60 days' notice. But the state law says, yeah, but if it's a primary year like this one, then there can't be a city special election four weeks before June 5 or four weeks after June 5. So, if the council didn't take action to hold a special election until some later time, but got into holding a primary in May, that primary's not going to be until probably August, okay? If citizens filing a petition, either by design or accident or whatever else, if they submit their request to the council to have a special election after the council says we're going to appoint, or after the council has appointed, if the timing works out that that 60-day time period would fall in that blackout around the June 5 election, primary election, then that special election wouldn't happen until sometime in August. So, you may want to consider some of those, or you may not, but you should be aware of those possible timing considerations. Some of them are possible, depending on, you know, when the council calls the election, if there's a petition. Some of them the council has control over, if the council waits, you know, to call an election, or doesn't take action, and the default then is to have a special election.
Can we suspend the primary requirement by a vote of council?
No. You may, you may. So, the council last year considered an ordinance that would have done away with the primary system, but it was defeated. So, the, so maybe, I mean, I don't know, Nick. I'd have to think about the timing of it. If the council had, like, a special election, or had three meetings and adopted, you know, adopted a resolution to, or an ordinance to do away with the primary system, got that published, and then said, we want a special election, we don't need 60 days for the primary. I don't know if the timing of that could work out as possible, but you can't just suspend it.
Okay, would council like to consider either 1803, I guess we're in 18, aren't we, or 1804 in a motion for discussion?
I'd move for adoption of Resolution 1804.
Okay, motion by Nick. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
During this, okay, thank you. Discussion.
You know, there's been some discussion between the new council members about whether we could find consensus, or even, I think, three votes for a certain outcome that would be anything but the special election, and I think that there, you know, that some of the obvious choices are looking to see who had the, you know, the most highest votes and seeing if they're interested. Obviously, we've also talked about how we do need to have a forum and, you know, hear from anybody else who'd be interested. I get concerned that we would get quite a ways away from what the voters had been looking to do at the last election. I'd like to give them another chance to vote for a replacement. It's going to be almost an entire term that this person's going to serve. And also, based on, you know, what Steve says, if we don't act somewhat quickly, it looks like we're going to be potentially pushed quite a ways out to actually have the election, if we would, in fact, either not appoint somebody, or appoint somebody and then a member of the community wanted to have a special election. And so, yeah, I think, you know, my position is I'd like to send this to the voters, and I think it'd be more efficient in terms of the council's time also. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
I agree with much of that. I look at, we have some more complicated or contentious possibly issues before us. We've come through how many elections now that have been somewhat contentious, and I think what we need to do as a council is let the voters decide who they want to fill the fifth council seat, so I support the special election. Well, I was, I was listening carefully to what Steve was talking about, the technicalities and the potential of having a double election if you have more than two individuals running for this primary, triggering a primary. So, if more than two candidates are running for office, it would trigger two. It's my, also, my understanding that each of these elections would cost approximately $1,800 to the city. Am I correct on that, Steve?
Yeah, that's right.
It's about $1,800 times two, that we're talking close to $4,000, and it becomes a good question of, you know, I think the voters expressed a certain outcome. There's a certain dynamic that they were upholding, and I'd like to see this council work off of goodwill amongst ourselves because we are starting a fresh new chapter as a council, and I think it would be mature of us to express ourselves in a consensus candidate, to reflect that, you know, a non-controversial candidate who isn't single-issued, and, you know, also to save our city from the expense of about $4,000 worth of that. So, I would be supportive of continuing dialogue at the table to see if we can't arrive at a consensus before making this decision of going to a special election. I hear what you have to say, I understand what you have to say, Nick, but to a certain degree, we are going to be required to exercise some leadership on council, and that starts with simple questions like, are we going to save our taxpayers some dollars? Are we going to also drag them out for another round of potentially two more elections? And I'd like to demonstrate some leadership here by coming up with a consensus candidate that is amenable to this group.
My concern is that we, as adult councilors, should be able to sit down and discuss a candidate that would, so to speak, have his or her foot in each camp. It is a very contentious community. It is, I do not want it to end up like the One University Place conflict that went on for decades. I think we have an opportunity here to be mature, to step up, to try to reason between the four of us, and make some suggestions. If the community is very antagonistic about those choices, or that choice, they have an opportunity to demand an election. So, I don't think the idea of dredging up prior candidates is a good idea at all. The community made decisions, and I think we should respect their decisions.
1804 is before you unless you want to withdraw.
Well, could I ask a question of, Steve, do you have a sense, or, I don't know, maybe the mayor would, of the cost of, we've talked about the cost of elections. We also have the cost of the forums. You know, we've had city council time, staff time for those forums in the past. Do we have a sense in terms of the cost? I mean, it's not, you know, basically, when we have a forum, we have staff present. Have we calculated that in the past, do you know?
Well, I would say we haven't, but it's all volunteer, except for the video person that we had most recently. I would imagine they paid the video person.
Yeah, I don't know if it calculates.
At the recent forum, but I mean, some of the other people, like Paul DeYoung, he donated his time.
That was for an election, but I think when we had the forums before, didn't we have, we had Legal here, we had, no?
No.
I don't think I've ever been to a candidate forum.
He's never been to a forum. He's never been to a forum. We haven't had staff there.
And maybe you're talking about the mayoral candidate forum. That was a city council meeting, so you did have your usual folks that were participating in the council meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
It was a regular.
Mayoral, when we had the mayoral.
Oh, when the mayoral appointment.
Right.
Oh, I see, yeah. That was at a regular meeting, right?
Well, so, we've had, we've had discussion on this, as the council members know, and there's.
Well, I'd like to think that it's not final, though, Nick.
That's the only thing I do.
Okay, well, I'm fine to have more discussion. There seems to be two, you know, very different ways of looking at this appointment. There is the idea that we try to look at what the voters had done before, and, you know, and try to, you know, follow through with the votes that have already been cast, and there seems to not be support for that, enough support for that. And then there's also the idea of plucking someone out of the community, and, you know, I've raised the concerns about, even if we find someone, and if the city is not okay with that, we've heard about the timeline concerns, this would be an election that we'd have in August. We have a lot of council work to do, as Lisa pointed out too, and I think this is going to be something that is going to take away from that. You know, it's a point that Dottie had made in the meetings, I know for a different purpose, but we do have a lot to do, and I think that having the forum to pick somebody would be taking away from the time that we need to do other things.
I'd request that this motion be tabled until we, as counselors, have an opportunity to pursue additional dialogue. We still have February as our, at our special council, at our regularly scheduled meeting to continue. But I think before we make a dramatic commitment to a special election, we need to exhaust all dialogue amongst ourselves.
I think it would be a good idea to have another special meeting whereby we could get together and really try in earnest to choose a consensus candidate.
Could we have feedback from the community, too? I know there's community members.
Okay. Jase, did you want to come up to the microphone, please?
February meeting, it's still missing.
Real tight. They worked. I can help simplify the decision and make it where the special election is the only alternative, because if you move appointment, I already have 50 signatures, because I've been contacted by that many community members the moment Noah said he wanted to resign. So, whether it's me running or not, an appointment won't happen. There'll be a special election. So, because of the timing issues, calling for it now makes a lot more sense.
And I'm calculating, according to Carrie Nierling, we can't go past April 3rd. And if we went to the February meeting date, which I think is February 13th, 60 days makes it April 13th.
No less than, no less than 60 days.
No less than, it's 60 days.
Yeah, you have to give them 60 days.
You have to give them 60 days.
60 days, no less than 60 days.
I mean, it's still 60 days. So, I don't, you know, then it would be in August if we wait, but Dottie suggested a special meeting. I mean, I'm just trying to give you what I heard.
Sure. Special meeting is fine with me.
Well, this, Resolution 1804 is before you unless someone decides to pull it, you know, and the council agree.
Can we still discuss?
Otherwise, if there's any more discussion, we can vote on 1804.
I think it shows goodwill to the community on the part of the council to say that you are adults, you can choose who you want in the fifth council seat. I think I am just, I feel strongly about this, and I don't see that I'm going to agree on a candidate. I don't think that is wrong. I think this needs to be, it's a full-term, almost a complete full-term vacancy, and I think it needs to go before the voters.
Is there any other discussion about 1804 to set a special election to fill the vacancy? Okay, ready for a roll call vote?
Casada. Epstein. Herbald.
Aye.
Maher.
Epstein.
Moore.
Aye.
Rejected.
What?
It's rejected. It's rejected, not adopted. Takes three votes.
I thought in your report, did I misread your report, that if it was 2-2, but that was, I mean, explain, I mean, just explain your report.
Yeah, so the, so the motion was to, was to hold a special election, and what I think what my report says is if there's a, if there's a motion to appoint someone, and it's a 2-2 vote, in other words, then there's not an appointment, well, then there's going to be a special election.
I see. That's for appointment.
Yeah. And so, at this point, where things stand, the council could move to a point tonight, or at some other point, and the council still has, well, the full 60 days to take action one way or the other, before the default special election would trigger.
So, if I would move to a point, and there was a 2-2 vote, then we would be going to a special election?
That's what he just said.
Yeah, I mean, I think you would.
That's how I understood it.
The only wrinkle there, Nick, is if.
I'd like to motion that we have a special, a special meeting to follow up on this. I don't think it's a complicated issue, and I think we need to be careful about being responsible with our taxpayer dollars, and being conscientious of the voters who are expecting us to make decisions, and many of whom have expressed that they trust this council body to do the right decisions. So, I feel comfortable if you guys are ready for a special meeting, or a working session, whatever you want to call it.
I just want, Steve, had you finished your answer?
Probably. The, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a conflict, or potential conflict, between a couple of statutes. The law says the council has 60 days, so if the council doesn't, by an affirmative vote of three members, appoint somebody, then there's a default to the special election. Does that, does that mean if that's considered tonight, that the council couldn't come back next week and try again to appoint somebody? You know, that's open to interpretation, I guess, in my mind, but I think that if the council moves to appoint somebody and that fails, it seems to me you're having a special election.
Well, Sylvia has asked for a special meeting.
Right.
And I second, I also.
Do you want a special meeting? Okay. Well, we'll look at, we'd like, I'd like a third person to.
I'm just, I'm going to move to adopt 1803, and I can wait until after we talk about schedules, or we could, we could consider it now.
Would it be okay if we considered 1803 now, with the two people who want to set a special meeting? I mean.
Sure, sure.
If we consider Resolution 1803?
Sure.
I mean.
Go ahead. Do you want to withdraw the motions?
Well, is it agreeable to the council to withdraw the motion and the second?
The motion for the special meeting?
Yes.
Please withdraw.
And it's okay with, no conflict with the rest of the council, they agree? Okay. You agree, Lisa? Dottie's looking at me, like, I don't know. So, Nick has made a motion to consider Resolution 1803, giving notice to the city council's intention to fill the vacancy created by Councilmember Hughes resignation by appointment. Is there a second?
I second Nick's motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Nick and a second by Lisa. Discussion. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Sorry, I thought there was going to be a discussion.
Moore.
Voting however you want to.
No, I'm, I do not wish to.
So, I am saying no, thank you.
Okay. Maher.
Aye.
Herbald.
No.
Casada. Epstein.
So, it's rejected.
Okay, so 1803 is rejected.
Yeah, so the question for the council then is, you know, do you want to, do you want to try to appoint at some other point? Do you want to consider it done?
I'd like to raise a special council meeting. So, I'm placing a motion on the table, and looking for a courtesy second from any of the other two counselors, such as Lisa or Nick, to enter into further dialogue.
Oh, you want to talk about just more discussion?
No, not now. No, more discussion than a special meeting.
A special, okay.
Correct.
I missed the special meeting part, okay. And is there a second for that motion, for a special meeting?
I'll say.
There is by Dottie, it sounded like.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, we can look at the calendars, or discuss further if you want a special meeting.
I guess just brief discussion.
But we need some discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'm, go ahead.
Oh, you know, for me, it's, it's just a matter of efficiency, and really trying to make decisions after there's been discussion. And, you know, there has been, you know, significant discussion between council members, and, you know, I've heard from the community now that there will be a special election. You know, to me, it seems like it is inefficient to have a special meeting to discuss this further after it has been discussed, and after we've been told by the community that there will be a special election if we appoint somebody.
Is there any further discussion?
I don't think it precludes any, any potential outcome that the member of the community spoken up and made himself available wouldn't be appointed. So, I see no reason why not to proceed into a special meeting.
I think the community needs to vote on this. It's a full term.
Dottie, did you want to say something? Are you ready to vote?
I'm ready to go home.
Okay, I mean, this is like an all-in-favor.
Could we sort of move forward as adults here, you know, and make some decisions? I can't see that there's anything to be lost by trying to discuss it again. If we can't, if we can't discuss things now, it's a poor omen for the next two years.
I think we have discussed this. We discussed it before the first of the year. I think we've discussed it, and I think those of us that feel strongly about putting this before the voters are the ones that are being told we need to change our minds.
I think it's shirking our duty to try, at least, to see if there's some consensus candidate. I mean, we're a village over here, you know? We're not an alien body. I would think we could talk to each other, and maybe shout at each other, but I think we need to figure out exactly what it is that's a hang-up between the parties.
Well, I disagree that it's a hang-up between the parties, and I thought our discussion was very respectful, and I thought it was very productive, you know, and sometimes there is a difference of opinion between people, and I don't think that's a bad thing, is, you know, especially if you go about it in a respectful way, you listen to each other's viewpoints, and this isn't a situation where we have, our failure to act means that, you know, the community is going to be out something, I guess, in my opinion.
No, we're all going to be out a substantial amount of money.
Well, it is, it is an amount of money, and I don't take that lightly, but I also know that we have, as you pointed out at our meeting, we have other things that we need to address, and this will be time-consuming. It will potentially mean that we won't have an election until, I think, August was the discussion, potentially. So, I really think that, at times, you know, it is really important to try to reach agreement, and it's something that I definitely believe in, but I think at times, you just have to make a decision, and if there isn't consensus, there's going to be, in some cases, a default outcome, and I think in this case, the default outcome is that we have a special election. And again, I don't think it's a bad outcome, obviously, and I don't think it's disrespectful to the public. I think it's respectful to the public. I think it would have been fine, potentially, under different timing circumstances, and also, potentially, if it weren't such a large percentage of the term, to give it a shot, and to take the time to listen to people who are interested in all of that. But, you know, in my opinion, this is, the right course of action is to make the call, have the special election set, and try to get it done, obviously, before, you know, the primary issue for, for the auditor causes us to have it further delayed.
Is there any more discussion? Because we need to decide about a special meeting.
So, the week of the 23rd, I was hoping that we'd be available, and that also coincides with a request further down the agenda to also meet in that same week for purposes of discussing certain department budgets, budget items.
Well, before we discuss the date, I think we ought to vote if council wants a special meeting. All in favor that want a special meeting later this month, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
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 Okay, and you voted how, Dottie? You abstained?
She said yes.
She said yes. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
And I'd just like to clarify, there may be a need for a special meeting. I'm just, my intent is not to have one specifically to bring this up again.
So, it's, so your, your motion was not, was not adopted to have a special meeting.
All right, so we move on.
Yeah, so let me clarify what I, what I think your timing is. If the council does not appoint someone within 60 days of today, then you default to a special election. At that point, it's going to be March, which means your special election's not going to happen until August. So, if you, yeah.
Okay. So, well, I want to move further into the agenda, because I see that Stan Loverman is here, and I know he has to leave sooner, and so I'd like to go to the housing inspector report on the second page, and Stan, I don't know, we can pull up a chair on the end, maybe, and use Chris's microphone, the chief's microphone, and thanks for coming, Stan, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wanted you to come to kind of meet the new council, which I know you're a resident of University Heights also, and to kind of get them up to date on what's, what happened January 1st, and where are we now? I think it'd be very helpful.
So, at this point, University Heights has a moratorium on rental permits, which has led to a lot of questions, just because as other communities adopt things, people are wondering where University Heights is at. There is some movement at the beginning of the year as houses come on the market. There have been people that have contacted me about family properties that they hope to rent to relatives for a period of time, and then eventually kids, or kids, very much adults, will retire into the house that their, their parents have lived in. So, I think there's some things that need some consideration, and probably some, some quick consideration. So, as we, we left it, we had put a few regulations in place at the, at the end of the year, but there was quite a few points that needed to be addressed. I think that was also on the agenda for tonight, about a timeframe moving forward on that, so. And I would, I guess what I would say is that discussion needs to happen sooner than later, just because there's some angst out there among residents for different reasons, and for valid reasons. The realtor community has been very receptive to reaching out to me as an Iowa City employee, and I have multiple meetings set with both large and small groups. I met with Caldwell Banker today and walked them through all of the Iowa City regulations, and walked them through where University Heights sits currently, so there's a desire for them to seek information before acting. I don't think it's a, a situation. I don't think it's a, a situation where you have people that are acting without considering where the cities are at. But again, I think it's in our best interest to solidify our position moving forward. So back in October, November, I had given a, a list of items that I feel the council should consider. I would not deviate from any of those items. At one point, I met with Nick and, and walked through some of those. But again, I think it's something that I'd be happy to meet individually or with a subcommittee or however, however it takes to get people up to speed on those items that were presented previously.
Steve, would you just review what happened January 1st with the law?
Sure, yeah. So effective January 1, cities in Iowa no longer may restrict occupancy of dwellings based upon familial, familial status. The, kind of bedrock occupancy restriction in University Heights since the zoning ordinance was enacted in 1982 or '83 has been, you know, only one person, not a member of the family, may occupy. That's a restriction based on familial status. So as of January 1, that restriction cannot be enforced. As a consequence, the council took some action, as Stan outlined, and left some things for this council to consider.
Sylvia, you had an agenda item about the timetable.
I did. And it's precisely because I too have been hearing from residents and investors who, who own property in University Heights or would have liked to have owned property in University Heights. And people are concerned about what else are we going to be regulating? So I, I'd like to see a timetable for us. The moratorium lifts on March the 1st, which means, looking back, we've got to probably have working sessions, if not special meetings, to address some of these changes. We don't have a nuisance, we need to look at our nuisance program. We have to look at our more robust and comprehensive rental program rules. So that's going to require drafting ordinances and publishing them and making them available to the public so they can be followed effective March 1, right? Or the way I look at it is we can also extend the moratorium until further out, closer to when the cycle for the rental programs are renewed or the permits are renewed, which is July 1. Every July 1, the city sends out a request to property, rental property management agents or owners and asking them, do you want to continue this permit for this coming year? If yes, you need to provide the following information, make payment and schedule for inspections. So we have a couple of options, but we are pressed for time, March 1. And it's already, I already say half of January is gone. And we only have February left. We have March and we, March 1 is just too soon. So I'd like to see this council explore moving into May, if not June, and concluding and rounding up what we have to do no later than, than June. Because people will need time to read these new ordinances, prepare their properties or, or prepare for inspection and, and make that happen. So I just don't know how mu- how quickly we can pivot. So unless we meet twice a week, I just don't see us going through the issues at a regularly scheduled meeting. And I'd like to know from this council if we're available to have working sessions or special meetings altogether, outside of today's meetings.
Does June work for a timetable? Isn't that too late for the renters who rent July 1 or?
Yeah, most leases are going to change over August 1st.
August 1st.
So even now, it's, it's a period of uncertainty for investors, for people who are, you know, longtime residents that are trying to turn over property. I mean, that's the realtors are calling, I mean, how do I market this property? What is available? What, what opportunities do we have in, in University Heights? And I believe there's certain areas that may handle additional rentals. There may be areas that don't. But I, I think extending it out that long is going to cause quite a bit of trepidation with long-term owners and people who are looking to invest also.
So I'd like to think, let's look at track A, option A. What's everyone's availability for the remainder of January going into February for working sessions?
What date did you think?
The first one I thought would be for the rental program, we might as well start next week. And then I need the following week, the week of the 23rd, another working session for budget. So we're starting to accelerate working sessions.
So you're thinking January 16th or, and/or January 23rd? And this-
The 23rd would be best.
The 23rd would be preferable for me.
These are Tuesdays.
Yeah.
And you're talking a work session or-
A work session.
Special meeting, work session.
Yeah, right. And it would be to go over precisely these issues that Stan is talking about. And Stan, does that timetable work for you?
I'm going to be blunt. I'm going to have an expectation that people are reading the material and have an understanding of it. Because I have talked about this to multiple people, multiple times. I've shown up at council meetings where decisions were needed to be made and there was hesitation to make that decision, where I feel there's been adequate information shared. I, I'm not interested in meeting and having another work session for people to become familiar with the material.
So does it-
I feel as a council, you need to be familiar with this material before we have another work session on it.
Does the 23rd work for you?
The 23rd works for me as long as people have read the material and are ready to go.
I think it should be a special meeting so council can make some decisions. On a work session, you can't, council can't make a decision. So why don't we make it a special meeting if it's agreeable to the council? So that in case they want to consider, they can vote that night. Is that okay with you too, Sylvia?
Sure, although, yeah, that's fine.
So you, the 23rd is what Stan works with and Nick and Lisa and Dottie?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so that's at 7:00 PM on the 23rd.
And I think it might be nice to be clear, we, we would be taking public comment at that special meeting, is that right?
Absolutely.
And one of the, one of the bigger issues I think we're going to be discussing is, you know, whether to, you know, how to define the communities if we're into a rental cap or how to break up the community for a rental cap and what that cap should be like. And I think it, it would be good to continue to hear from the community about, about that.
Well said. Any other comments? Okay.
I do. Stan, you gave a really nice synopsis of some economics or dynamics of local, of the local economy that are driving a cap recommendation that you made. Do you have anything in writing on that? I don't remember seeing that in the packet. But I think it would be helpful for the two new members of council to have it. It's, it's basically how across the river, the cap has already come down the dome, as I call it. And you've got capital that needs to be invested. And it makes sense to go across the river to another area, such as our city.
Right, there's, in Iowa City, in the near downtown areas, all of those neighborhoods are essentially capped out. The closest neighborhoods to us, to the south, the first neighborhood is capped out. If you get into the Miller Orchard neighborhood, there's four rental permit applications that are eligible. You go out a little bit further west, there's 12. So there's, will be significant pressure in the new year as people look to invest near downtown Iowa City.
And Stan, can I also ask you a question? Do you have any, I know that you, through your Iowa City work, you've done extensive research on this issue. Do you have any articles or any reviews of any of the other cities outside of Iowa that have successfully applied the cap and worked to even minimize from the cap starting and lowered it?
I would, I would encourage you to look at East Lansing, Michigan. Go to their website. It's very extensive. They walk through what they've done. I think a lot of people have made the decision to start low on the cap because you can always go higher. It's harder to go from a higher cap and take away people's ability to rent after you've granted that authority.
Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Stan too? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Dan. Thank you for coming tonight. Let's keep on going here to legal report. And before we do legal, I think we should do zoning commission.
I think, could we, I think we skipped-
Yeah, I know we did. I know. But since we're already here, could we maybe go to zoning? I meant to complete that and then we'll go back to these items. Thanks, Pat.
Pat Bauer, 338 Cozer. The zoning commission was going to be meeting next on March 6th, but council meeting that night, I think our next meeting will be in here. Just remind council that December meeting, we reported three items. Three items. One was an assessment of the development potential of the Swisher Track by the city engineer. The second was a revision of the comprehensive plan. And the third was the development of an amendment to sensitive areas to clarify that onsite buffers of offsite sensitive areas were subject. My recollections that the council at December directed the city attorney to develop that amendment to the sensitive areas ordinance, but there was no action taken on those other two items. The revision of the comprehensive plan is on the agenda tonight. But the first thing about assessing the extent of development potential of Swisher Track, I think remains an open item.
Are there questions for Pat?
No, nope, just comments. Pat, I, I am working on the Swisher Track, so it's, but there's other options that we'll be pursuing this time.
Okay, thank you so much, Pat. Now we'll go back to, let's see, we're at review, community center rental agreement and fees. And Nick, you had a question about it. And why don't you just go ahead?
Yeah, I, I, this is going to be brief, but I, I would like to start a discussion about the use of the community center, this, this room right here. You know, I've heard from the community that it would be used more if the fee were lower. And some ideas about lowering the fee would be, maybe there wouldn't be a fee if it were for a community purpose. Maybe residents of the University Heights would be able to use a space without a fee for a community purpose. And also in speaking with the chief, it doesn't sound like it's getting used very much at all. So I, I just think it's a discussion we should start to start considering lowering, you know, addressing waiving the fees or lowering the fees to encourage its use. I mean, that's what it's here for in part. And I really would like to just hear if other council members have some ideas. Kind of, one of the trends I want to start is, is throwing out ideas for a little discussion before coming in with kind of a concrete idea of what we should do. But I, I do feel that we should really consider, you know, either waiving or drastically reducing the fees if it's, again, if it's a community member for a community purpose. And obviously, there'd be a lot of discussion about what particularly that means. But also just encouraging the use, the responsible use, and maybe distinguishing between, you know, community members using it for a community purpose versus a commercial purpose that might be revenue generating. So if, if any council members have ideas on that, I was just curious to hear back before I started maybe getting something in writing.
Well, we have Mary who wants to make a comment, so, yeah. But I did want to just tell you, Nick, that that's part of the impetus for the Arts Cultural and Recreation Commission, which will have a third reading this evening. And that is precisely to have a group of residents who bring to the table a number of interests around that recreation, educational, you name it. And part of it is to have somebody who may want to make proposals as to what community events can be held here. So the commission is the springboard to try to formalize what you're envisioning, which is more community use of this, of this building. But I would, apart from that, I would be very happy to revisit the, the policy. It, it was a contentious policy because it raises issues of parking and issues of commercial use versus community use. And I think this council needs to probably revisit those concepts with a different set of eyes. So I would be supportive.
Mary?
I just had another suggestion if you are going to open this up again. I sort of went in and read how much different groups would pay. And nonprofits also get charged. I feel like it might be a good thing for University Heights to consider the nonprofits that help support our community members and maybe find their way to allowing the space to be used, say, once a month for free by a nonprofit. Old Brick Downtown would do this when, when I was working for the civic engagement program. It was a very nice thing for them to do and our nonprofit partners really appreciated it. As well, the City of Iowa City's Recycling Center out on Scott Boulevard, they have that very nice community room. And I believe they make special exceptions for some nonprofits as well as the building out on the Johnson County Fairgrounds where Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that office building there, the, the new building, where they have a very nice meeting room. And they allow nonprofits to meet there. Again, I don't know if it's free, but maybe greatly reduced. I think in these times, when so many resources are being cut back, it would be a really nice thing for University Heights to kind of, you know, hold out their hand and say, we want to be more active with our nonprofits. And we want to do something since we have a resource that maybe you could use. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to say that I was thinking about what events we had here over the last year. And we had the Bike to Work Breakfast, mostly on the outside, but it was here. And then Mike Havercamp organized a bike ride that ended here. And there was a movie shown here. And that was another event that was held. But I, those are the two events that I remember during the year that were held here.
It's, it's relatively new as well. The policy isn't a year old yet. So I, I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to review it early on right before graduation season starts coming around and people are looking for, for spots to hold a graduation or baby showers or who knows.
In conjunction with that too, I'd, I'd want to see what the budget is going to provide for community center so that we would be able to give nonprofits perhaps a free use of it. Because it's going to be costly to keep it up, to keep it clean, you know, to repair the damage that's done. So I think we definitely need a, a pretty good budget item.
Would council like to put this on like March or April agenda or February?
Well, let's do February. I would say February only because thinking of your graduation schedule, that's coming up soon.
As soon as I say it, I go, April's too late, isn't it?
Right, yeah.
Because May is graduation.
Invites are going out and all that, right.
Right, okay. Yeah, we're going to put it on the February.
I'm supporting that.
Oh, you are? You're supporting it? Oh, personally.
If you have a budget item, you want that done sooner rather than later.
Very good.
Do we, do we have any, I guess, good resource for the cleaning fees and anything like, do we?
Me.
We pay Chris?
It's not the same rate as Clark, it's a discounted rate.
But we can revisit that so that we can have a more systematic, you know, approach to it. That way we don't, I'm burdened. Poor Chris, you're doing everything.
I need to get new windows, so I'm actually grateful, so thank you.
Okay, so we'll put that on February's agenda, February 13. And then we'll go to discussion of the timetable to review the city comprehensive plan. And I know you wanted to talk about that, Sylvia.
I did. In addition to the rental program creating some angst, so- In addition to the rental program creating some angst, so has the comprehensive plan. And that's coming out of the hotel transaction. There's a number of residents who would like to see what exactly, where exactly is our city going in the next 10 years or so. And they've requested, well, what's the process for, for ensuring that we're all on the same page as a community? So I've recommended that we take a look at our comprehensive plan. We have to do it by law, because that is the legal instrument that is used to, you know, create your city. But we also have to do it just for, for practical reasons. Is that where we want to go as a community? So I think there's some really important questions that should be asked at about now to the city. And everything from what, what was meant by additional development on Melrose, if any. I think there was some discussion about the missing middle, which is more compact housing. And people are a little bit anxious to, to know what that means. So I am personally committed to raising the issue and bringing it to the table so that we can have MPOJC, I believe, who was previously engaged in the last quarter, to, to help us guide this community conversation. I spoke with the director of MPOJC, and his timetable is around February, would be a start time for a comprehensive plan. It's an extensive process that involves soliciting feedback, attending public meetings, public forums, visuals to assist in the discussion, and all sorts of other planning tools that, that that team would bring to the table. In addition to that comprehensive plan, what I have found out is that your ordinance system should also be supporting your comprehensive plan. If you have a certain direction that your city is taking or not taking, it behooves the city to have ordinances in place to ensure that they're consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan. So I am working on, working with another group of municipal consultants to see if they can't come in and do an evaluation of our ordinance system post the comprehensive plan, to make sure that we aren't missing certain ordinances, or that certain ordinances that need to be revised or made more robust are, are made, and that we're hopefully left in better stead with their feedback. So that's what I know about the comprehensive plan, but it's definitely coming sometime in February.
And Kent will contact the city when?
He said he would.
Puts it on the schedule. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Sylvia? Okay. Thank you. Now, I did, you know, I have it written here, orientation, but I missed it. But usually I have a council orientation. And we had five or six meetings in a row, and I decided not to have one the first week of January. So we'd have way too many meetings. And so I'd like to set a time for council orientation, which would be a meeting here that the public can attend also. So, would the council like an orientation? Would that be? Okay. I mean, we could have an orientation for just the new council members, we can have, but it's very helpful sometimes to have council here to give some input also. Otherwise, I'll just ask council to set a meeting time. How about January 16th? Tuesday, next Tuesday?
I'm not available. Next week.
Next week, you're not available.
For how long, Louise?
Probably an hour.
Okay.
What did you say, Steve?
I think that's all it's ever taken.
Yeah, I think it's.
If, if that.
If that, 45 minutes, an hour? I mean.
Could we do it this week?
Uh, no. I can't do it this week. How about, how about next week, later in the week, like Thursday? If that's the, no, 16th, 17th? Nope, nope.
I can be here on the 16th.
Okay. Ken, does that work for Nick or Lisa? Dottie's not here. Does it work for you, too?
What about the 30th? Is that, do you think that's getting pushed too far out?
I don't think so. I think the 30th is, wait a second.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a what?
Tuesday.
As long as it's like 7 o'clock, because I, I have a 4 o'clock somewhere. Okay, let's try, let's try the 30th. And, does that work for you, Dottie?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll try the 30th, for an hour at 7 o'clock.
For orientation.
For orientation. And it's very helpful if the clerk is here, and of course, Steve. And we haven't usually had Josiah here. I think we can manage. I'm just thinking. You know, you have a lot of good input, but I think that'd be good. And that'd be great. Thank you very much for taking that time with your calendars. We'll go on to the legal report. Aren't we there now? Legal report. Steve?
Sure, thanks. I don't have much to add to my written report. The agenda item that I think is before you is Resolution 1805, which accepts, authorizes the mayor to accept the bill of sale and sign the bill of sale from the developers of the hotel property. There was a conditional zoning agreement entered into between the city and the developers that required the developers to convey the house at 901 Melrose to the city, not the land on which the house sits, but just the house. The developers prepared and presented a bill of sale for the house, and 1805 acknowledges that, accepts it, and authorizes the mayor to approve it.
I motion adoption of 1805.
Motion by Sylvia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Discussion?
Oh, I just wanted, I think we, you had talked about insurance previously, and that policy is effective?
I was going to ask that, too. I, I don't know. I haven't, yeah, it is?
Yeah, I took care of that.
Good, okay. And they, whoever you talk to understands the?
House only, not land.
Yeah, okay. And I don't, I think it's occupied and?
I called the next day after the last meeting.
Okay.
I will touch base with the developers to ask them what exactly that means, once we take possession. I'm presuming that the doors remain locked. I don't know if there's anyone living there right now, or if it's been vacated. Does anyone know on council? I don't know. But we need to take some measures to secure the property so it doesn't become a loitering opportunity. But in any event, I could follow up with both Russ Boyer on that and Jim Glasgow.
Okay, thank you. So is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Herbold?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher? Carrie?
Okay, so you're going to let me know, Sylvia, if you?
I'll coordinate with you.
Coordinate with me, yes.
We'll keep you on the loop, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go to the city.
I'm sorry. I would, I was going to mention, so as you think toward revisions to the policy related to the use of this space, just keep in mind, from the city's standpoint, the city is permitted to enact what the law tends to call time, place, and manner restrictions, but they have to be content neutral, okay? So if you let the Republicans meet here, you have to let the Democrats meet here. And if you let the Democrats meet here, you have to let the Nazis meet here, okay? You can't say, oh, yeah, we don't really like you, all right? So you've got to really keep that in mind from a First Amendment standpoint.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, Chris, the clerk report.
So I sent out the clerk report, the updated building and rental permit spreadsheets. For the new councilors, when you see a yellow line on any of those spreadsheets, that means that is a new item I've received since the last meeting. So that's my way to designate it, it is new. And if I may jump into the rental housing issue, I would like to be a part of that discussion, because I have some administrative things I would like to see put in, of things that are and are not working.
Did the 23rd work for you? Good.
Any questions or comments to Chris? Okay, we'll go on to finance, which is Sylvia.
All right. I'd like to start off by, just going over the, our timetable here. Our first deadline that we have to meet is March the 13th, council meeting. Steve Cole will be here with us, a final budget presentation. And I?
You know, we changed it to March 6th now, just so, just to remind you.
Thank you.
You know?
It's not a print, right.
It's new.
No, no, that's fine. March 6th. So I'm going to request that we please have a special meeting on January 23rd, which we've already agreed to, to add discussion items in the following. I think as a new council, we need to be aware of some of our departments and understand what the budgeting issues are in those areas. And the areas that I'd like to have a special meeting involve UHPD, the rental program, and then streets and sidewalks, Glen Siders, and the hotel, and salaries publication. So these are issues that I'm afraid will make our special meeting a lengthy one, so we may have to have a second special meeting. So I wanted to ask if we can look into our February calendar to see if we can put another working session for the budget, just to make sure that we're all?
Okay, our meeting's on the 13th, our regular meeting.
So the 23rd of January, we already, we already have a number of agenda items. So I'm thinking?
Right.
February the 6th would be good, because it gives Steve Cole that entire remaining week to assist in preparing a draft budget, which would then turn into your, your second to last version before the 6th of March. So do any of, is there any, obviously, probably not, let's see, 23rd. We could also meet the last week of Jan, oh, no, we already have another one, another meeting on the 30th of January. So for budget, can we meet the week of the 29th of January, or the week of February 5th, after the regularly scheduled council meeting? And the February, this last meeting could conceivably be canceled if we resolved all of our budget issues at the regularly, at the, on the 23rd.
So you're looking at February 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, in there? Is that what you're talking about?
I think with these additional meetings, it would be nice maybe to keep them on Tuesdays if possible. I don't know if, if that makes sense for a community, too, if they're going to be present to kind of know that's generally the day we're going to have meetings.
Yeah, and if you're going to do that, then February 6th is your, that would be, yeah, because it's February the 13th is the?
No, March 6th was what our meeting. Are you, are you mixing February?
Right. No, no, I'm looking at February. So to be consistent with Nick's recommendation here, I'm looking at January 30th, but we already have another meeting there.
Right.
So can we meet February the 6th?
Yes.
So that would be the?
That's a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
I know.
And that would be the second?
I thought she mixed it.
The second special meeting. And it's ahead of the 13th of February, when we have our regularly scheduled meeting. So that leaves Steve Cole with some time to process any of the concerns we have.
Okay, does that work with Lisa and Dottie? 6th, the 6th and Nick, yes. Steve, I see head nods. And Chris, you're nodding your head. Okay, we've got that. So it's the 23rd, but if we need another meeting, it's February 6th.
Right, and that, and we can decide on the 23rd whether?
Right. Okay. Well, we'll schedule it for now, and we'll see.
All right. So I did want to draw your attention to the memo that Jim Lane left as a transition piece in December. He has some budget responsibilities, and he broke them down into a number of actionable items. Public safety, I think, Nick, you probably are working on those. Public works, Dottie, you probably will need to work with Josiah and the tree board on those. We have culture, recreation, general government miscellaneous, and community center expenses. So I will partner up with the mayor on those, because we still need to do a salaries publication. So it would be important for me to be involved in those anyway. In the second page of that transition memo, was looking at legal service budgets and e-government, e-government, Lisa, I think you've got going, and League of Iowa City fees and MPOJC assessments. So we can look at those. And I will be touching base with our service providers, Josiah and Steve, and to go over some budget issues. All right. And so that's what I have with respect to now. You'll hear more on January 23rd.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Sylvia? Okay, we'll go on to consideration of ordinance number 221, amending ordinance 193 concerning conflicts of interest.
Right. The purpose of the amendment before you tonight is simply to standardize common practice. This is a, when an individual has identified a conflict of interest on a topic that he or she is about to vote on, it is customary across many industries, including the University of Iowa, public, public practice, being on boards, that the individual remove themselves from discussing any issues with respect to, with respect to the topic, that they have some financial or personal gain interest that, that would, that would come about. And so I am just standardizing the ordinance to prevailing practice standards. It is nothing, it's nothing other than simply standardization to common practice at this point. And many of us have served on boards, and we know that the common practice is to remove yourself from discussion and from voting. Previously, in, in the last year, we allowed, that other council allowed members with a conflict of interest to continue discussing, discussing, and discussing, and influencing the conversation. And when it came to the vote, they would stop at voting, but they had already had the advantage of presenting information that, who knows, may or may not have favored their, their interest or not. We, we won't know. I won't make that call, right? But we can presume that that is what the industry and many folks that do care about having representatives making clean decisions up here, that if you have a conflict and you've identified it and disclosed it, just don't talk about it and don't vote on it either. So this would be a standardization to that practice. And let me know if you have any questions. The other thing, too, is that it requires that the city clerk and the mayor take some specific action. The mayor is to ask at the beginning of every council meeting, are there any conflicts of interest? That presumes that we have all been looking at the agenda items and carefully reviewed the documents before us. And number two, it also requires that the clerk identify the segment of the agenda in which the conflict was identified, so that the public who reads these minutes would be able to identify where the conflict was announced and where it was occurring. So very minor amendments with significant impact, and, and that's it.
Would you like a motion for?
Yes, I'd like, I'd make a motion to adopt this amended resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended resolution.
Okay, so?
So it's an ordinance.
Well, the new ordinance 221.
Right.
Yeah, ordinance 221. So there's a motion, and a second by Dottie. Okay, discussion. Anyone else like to discuss?
I mean, I, I appreciate the work on the general topic. I, I don't support the idea of putting the city at a disadvantage of not having the benefit of the views from people who may have a conflict of interest. I think it is, I, I think to, to say that that person cannot talk, again, does at least a couple of things. One, I think it takes away from the discussion the benefit that that person may have insights on whatever it is we're talking about. I know the example was brought up with Dottie and rental properties. If we're talking about rental issues, I would like to hear from Dottie about what her experience is. So I think it's, you know, that, that to me is, is a big, it's a big benefit, really. But I also, I, I just, I want to encourage people to disclose conflicts of interest, but I think it also assumes that the rest of us, if we hear that someone has a conflict of interest, we can't take that with a gr-. we can't take that with a grain of salt and, and take the benefit of their opinion with, with the understanding that they may have a, you know, conflicted view on it. So, you know, for those reasons, I would, and because we have an, you know, an ordinance already, and we have Iowa code that deals with this issue, I would not support this change at this time.
Well, that's, go ahead.
I would like to say that, as I said earlier, I've been on a multiple city of boards. All of them require a conflict of interest disclosure at the beginning. And then if you have a conflict, you recuse yourself. Now, you're allowed to stay in the room if you wish, or you can exit. You do not participate in any discussion. If you were a trial lawyer and you found that there was a conflict with your jury, they wouldn't remain in the room, they'd be out the door. So I think it's necessary, I think disclosure is essential, that if anybody continues to dialogue, there run, you run the risk of that person contaminating the thought process of the others because of their own interests. So to me, it's a no-brainer.
And just to address your concern, Nick, about, you know, the benefits of having a conflicted person discussing a discussion, well, you know, what's the purpose of the other four remaining counselors? They count, and I think they can carry the conversation without having to have the benefit of the conflicted person having to vocalize their, their opinion, which could control the outcome of a vote on council.
I, I think the jury, oh, sorry, Lisa. Well, I was just gonna say, I, I think the jury example is distinguishable on a lot of, for a lot of reasons. Most notably though, we, you know, they're, they're meeting behind closed doors. There's no accountability. You know, here, we are re-elected every year, or not, or every two years, depending on how we, we operate ourselves. And, you know, and again, we are, are not, this is not an up or down vote typically, where it's often a situation where we want to put thought into a situation, you know, have the best possible, you know, outcome for, you know, whether it's an ordinance or whatever we're discussing. We want, we want to have the benefit of all council members, in my opinion. But I think the vote does matter, you know. You can, like any member of the public, you can say what you think and the reasons why. And if you are, you know, if you can convince the other voting members of the council, then I would hope that means that's because it's the better outcome, not because you have some other, you know, sort of power over the other council members. So, so I, I think it, I think it's distinguishable.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Well, I was at the September 13th, 2016 meeting that was a pretty contentious meeting on this very subject. I went back and reviewed the web stream of it. And I, I don't support this change. I think we can, I think we can listen to someone and make a determination.
Well, topics like this will always be contentious, but it's something that the residents asked for, and, and many continue to request full compliance with what is a standard practice in a university town, many of whom work for, you know, for the university, who request grants from the federal government or state governments or nonprofits, many of which have even more robust and comprehensive disclosures about conflicts of interest that go as deep as disclosing financials, none of which is asked for here. We're just simply asking, if you have a conflict on a vote you're about to make, then don't talk about it, and certainly don't vote about it. So I, I think all it's doing is keeping the council table very, very clean and accountable, that there was no taint coming into, into a vote for, no matter how, how agreeable the vote might be, or how contentious the vote might be. It's a sense of, of cleanliness and sunshine at the, at the council table. And yes, it was contentious in 2016 because we obviously had individuals who had different opinions, but they're no longer on the council, and that's why this is before you today.
And I might add, it's also, this, this new amendment is the standard of practice in Johnson County.
Well, it's all over, federal government, state government, grants, nonprofits, boards, even legal practice. So I'm, I'm hesitant to, to, to hear that there's no support from the two, from Nick, on this, and that, and that there's concern that the other remaining counselors who don't have a conflict can't think for themselves or have enough confidence to vote on their, on their own without the conflicted member coming on board.
I seem to recall several pretty respected members of the community standing up in support of people being able to speak, not to vote, but to speak. And I agree with that.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I, I agree with the status quo, but the status quo does prevent people from voting when they have a conflict of interest. This is all about whether they can discuss the issue. And, and I just simply believe that they should be able to discuss the issue.
Well, if they're going to be discussing the issue, Nick, then we should be inviting every other competitor who isn't a counselor to join the council table and come in and discuss something. Because that's essentially what you're doing, is you're, you're saying if you have a counselor who's on two sides of a transaction, at the council table and on the other side, and they're about to discuss something, my theory is, if, if I follow your theory, then we might as well invite members who are out in the public, who are not counselors, who also have an interest in the subject, and ask them to come and influence the conversation as well. And, and that's, that's...
Possibly where we disagree is I value what the public says if they have an insight as much as I value what any city council member would say. So in doing that, you know, it, it, I, from your comments, I feel like you're saying that what people say from the public is not as important as what a fellow council member would say. But I actually look at that as, just as important. And so, you know, I want to hear from the fellow council member for their insights in exactly the same way I'd want to hear from the public. Both can't vote, both I want to hear from.
But it's a diff, totally different issue, Nick. Because the council has unique responsibilities. We've been selected by the community, and they trust us. And so it, we need to be clean and transparent, and everything needs to be in the brightness of the light and the light of the day. All the discussion and the talking can be held outside of the boardroom. Inside the boardroom, when you're voting on an important issue, it doesn't happen.
Again, I, maybe this is another disagreement, but I'm hoping that we have more discussion in the meetings, less discussion out of the meetings. This is the place in front of the public, I think, to have a lot of these discussions.
Not if you have a conflict, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just sorry you're off base.
I, I agree with the things that you said about having the openness, but I, again, I, I think that, I want to hear, and I think the example that was brought up, you know, the, the rental properties is a good one. I really do, I would want to hear your insights as a renter, just like I'd want to hear the public's insights, you know, if they're renters.
It is so simple, because if you, if you have a conflict, you disclose it. If I had a rental conflict ever, a conflict in business, I would be the first person to disclose it. Why would I want the dirty shroud of hiding anything? So to me, it's so simple. I mean, you disclose if you have an interest, a conflict, a family member that's involved in the transaction, and you keep quiet.
Okay, yeah, but the only, the only issue we're talking about here is whether a person has a conflict can discuss. They still are going to have to disclose, they still, I mean, we've all signed the form today.
It's to discuss and also administratively what the clerk and what the mayor will need to do, because it's more robust.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Casada?
Aye.
Moore?
No.
Maher?
Aye.
Herbold?
No.
Not carried.
Okay, we'll go on to resolution to support acquisition of green spaces for the community of University Heights.
Right. Before you is resolution on green space acquisition. It's a, it's reflective of what the community at this point has been expressing to me, and maybe to many of you as well, is that we'd like to have green space amenities as a community, and what steps are we doing to, to, to secure that future that's, that's greener for the city? And so I've, the resolution, I don't have a resolution number. Is there a number that we could attach to it? I'll just call it Resolution 18-X. Before you is a general statement of, of aspiring to have a community council who is going to take an active interest in pursuing park and/or greenland spaces for the enjoyment of our community. And so before you is this resolution?
18-06.
18-06, and I ask that you support it. If you have any questions, please ask them now.
Okay, and that was a motion by you?
Mm-hmm, is there a second?
18-06. I need a second.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Nick. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote. Oh, Larry, you wanted to discuss, thank you, sorry.
Larry Wilson, 308 Cozer. First of all, I think to say I'm all in favor of this resolution. I think it places an importance on green space, urban green space, recreational space, and something that is, the community should do their best to try to achieve. However, I would like to add another where I add.
Oh, perfect.
And covering its role in urban design, which is a little bit beyond the health and other ecological reasons you've given. And that is something to the effect that, whereas green spaces provide important contribution to the character and life of the community,
No, it's not you.
Could you start again? You were reading it pretty fast. Green spaces...
Larry, get closer.
I'll go slower and speak louder. Whereas green spaces provide important contributions to the character and life of a community, and provide green relief to development. That's pretty quick, there's probably a better way to say it.
It's the very last sentence after important...
If you have it in writing, we'll take it, Larry.
And life to the community, and then...
And green development.
And green development, I just didn't get that last thing, green development. Okay, I got it.
Okay. Who's writing it? Chris?
And one other comment, that is, I think it should be recognized that the development of green space, the ownership of green space involves maintenance. And you don't have a mechanism set up to maintain these green spaces. And I think this should be a part, or a follow-up to this resolution. And there are several things you could do. One idea, of course, is Iowa City Parks and Recreation is maintaining entire road park. Maybe a contract could be made with them. There's always private firms like some work around here that could do it. But I think you need to have a mechanism for dealing with the property that you get. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
In addition to Larry's amendment request, I'd like to also amend the resolution by notifying that the city presently owns and maintains 2,830 square feet of public parkland, and that is our beloved Triangle Park. So is there a motion to adopt, I, I motion to adopt Larry Wilson's amendment language?
Is there a second for adoption of the amendment?
Second?
Second by Nick. Okay, so is there any further discussion? Because we vote on the amendment first, I believe.
So if there's a maintenance issue, shouldn't, shouldn't we be discussing these things all together, maybe?
Yeah, I don't, could we talk about the maintenance part as part of the same amendment?
Well, this was more, this resolution is more aspirational. It's not necessarily, it's a public statement of policy. Hey, we'd really like to get green space, we're committed to it for the following, for the following reasons, A, B, and C. And of course, the administrative and operational concerns that have been raised through, who's going to do the lawn maintenance, the trees, the trail, whatever? That comes afterwards. But right now, we're not at any stage right now where we're doing anything other than making a public statement at the very first council meeting of 2018 to recognize that there is a public interest in the city having green space, and we'll, we'll take every reasonable step that we can to, to see how we, we get there.
I agree with that. I was just thinking in the, in the last paragraph where it says, and it's interest in pursuing park and/or green spaces, and then maybe we could add "and maintaining it," or something like that, based on Larry's comments, just to say that's part of our goal, is to not only acquire it, but also...
I'm, I'm amenable to, to that, sure.
Is this committing us to something? I mean, what green space do we have?
It's aspirational.
It's a commitment.
It's, it's a nice opening remark for 2018 to, I think none of us here would probably have a resident say they don't want green space.
I certainly want green space, but I'm just wondering, what are we aspiring to? You know, other than Swisher, what do we have that we're aspiring to?
So, all right.
Well, she has a question.
Oh, I think that's a good question. I, you know, I think for me, it's partially just getting out there that that's kind of one of our goals, and, you know, maybe an opportunity would arise where we, you know, that we don't even know of yet. And, and I think it just sends the message that that is, is kind of a collective goal that hopefully the community will hold us accountable for, if that's, if it's something we decide to, to pass, if we have an opportunity, and, and that would just be maybe another factor that the community might say, hey, you know. One of the options would be, you could increase the green space for the community. You said early in, you know, 2018, that that's something you wanted to do. So I think it's generally a positive from that perspective.
Right, and it doesn't commit us to anything. This doesn't authorize us to make budget allocations. If you'd like to, we can do that in February, actually at the next meeting in January.
Okay, so the first vote would be for the amendment. And Chris can read it if you want to go through it a little bit, Larry Wilson suggested.
Whereas green spaces are important contributions to the character and life of a community, and provide great relief to development. And I believe you also added "and maintenance" of those green spaces.
It's green development.
Yeah, green, green development.
And then maintenance. Well, that's a good question.
I'm reading it like it's on the paper.
But green wasn't in there. You didn't say green. That's all I'm saying. Okay, so that's what's before you, and so, roll call vote.
Maher? Herbold?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Carried?
Okay, now we're going to vote on the original motion for adoption of Resolution 18-06.
I move to approve.
We, we have a motion and a second by Sylvia and Nick, I believe. And so if the council's ready to vote, roll call vote.
Herbold?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Carried?
Okay, let's see, did we get everything, Sylvia? Third consideration of ordinance number 214, establishing the University Heights Culture, Art, and Recreation Commission. This is the third consideration.
Yeah, third consideration, actually, I'm looking at what remains and what time it is. Do you mind if we table this for the next meeting? I'm going to table for third consideration Farmers Market, and we'll go straight to Treasury reports and payment of bills.
So 214.
Okay, and that'll be the January 23rd, or the February 13th, regular meeting?
It's almost nine, yeah.
Thank you.
Treasurer's report?
Okay, the treasurer's report, and she submitted that... Okay, the treasurer's report, and she submitted that yesterday. And then she revised the warrants. And did everyone have a chance to look at it?
They did.
The visa bills.
Oh, they did? Okay.
So there was three visa bills, one for 83884, 190, I'll give you bills, Chris. 19374, 6425. We also got six bills from the city of Iowa for fuel, high road maintenance for the year, library services for third quarter, and higher projection services for the year. It was 46,73874.
Okay, but we were expecting those, yeah.
Are there any questions? Let's see, how do I say that? Is there any objection to paying the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now we go to chief report. Chris?
So I had the written report. I don't have a lot to add to that, just, I hope everybody reads it. I am fairly quiet, I don't talk about myself, but a lot's going behind the scenes. I think the police department's, you know, quadrupled in its professionalism, if I may say so myself. We're doing a lot that you may not see in training and programs and kind of working with other agencies on domestic violence training and investigations and all this kind of stuff that's happening behind the scenes. Nick and I have been talking about just, we're going to be doing more community stuff in the future, once I get caught up on some things. So hoping to have more community engagement meetings, we're going to have open houses, and maybe people can come see what we actually do on a day-to-day basis, make it less of a mystery. So I just wanted to put that on the radar. Do you want to bring up the third consideration?
Right. Third consideration of ordinance 216, amending ordinance number 120 to grant the chief of police authority to dispose of certain citations for illegal parking.
Chris, I would like to table this also till the next meeting. And look at your procedure for ticketing. I'm thinking, you know, if, if a ticket is issued, valid, valid ticket, they should be standing, and they should be defensible, and they should not be dismissed. So I'd like to see your criteria. I'm thinking, you know, you could take a snapshot of the violation, then you have some evidence. But if they're, if they're delivered, I, I don't see much basis in dismissing them.
Aye.
Unless it would be, you know, something like an medical, medical emergency ambulance, something like that, so.
I, I don't know if it's my place to push back, but a little bit, I mean, I believe I sent out those guidelines already, and those were my guidelines--
Okay, well then, I think we need to discuss those at the next council.
Okay, and that's fine by me.
I might just give another perspective on it, too. You know, I've seen the guidelines, it's something that we, we have coming up, I think, next on the agenda to consider a parking ticket. I would like to give the chief the authority to consider it, understanding that the person who received the ticket could then appeal to the city council, is my understanding. And if they don't like it, the city council does, you know, appeal to the magistrate court. I think, you know, it'd be nice to do that as quickly as possible to save council time discussing kind of another ticket that I think is, is under the discretion of the chief with this, if this ordinance was passed.
And Nick, that's exactly the word that I would like a little bit more parameters around, and that is the discretion. Because the police is such a public presence and public risk for the city, I think we need to have well-documented processes. And so I was hoping to hear from you that as the incoming Community Protection and UHPD chairperson, that you would look into that and help resolve the issue of establishing protocols for when this discretion is exercised, so that we don't have instances where you have the application of one ticket dismissed this way and another ticket dismissed for this other reason. I would like to see a consistent, uniform application, and I would be, I would leave that to, to your evaluation.
Yeah, no, I, I think, the concern I have is that the, this was sent out, and, you know, we, I feel like there is a habit of kicking the can down the road over and over. And I guess the upside of the discussion right now is I think it's pretty clear that everyone knows those guidelines have been sent out. I would encourage everyone to, to look at them. I'd ask the chief maybe to send those out again, just to really make sure that everyone has them. I think they're pretty straightforward. I, it doesn't give him a lot of discretion to dismiss tickets for no reason. Some of the big ones, actually, I'm going to jump a little bit, but, you know, we, we're going to discuss, or maybe I won't jump, we're going to discuss in just a second, that there is a protocol to notify the, the police department if you, you know, want an exception or if you have, have, have an issue that, that, you know, and you have to notify them in advance. Otherwise, it's pretty narrow. It's, it's basically UPS and that sort of thing, and the, I think the emergency stuff that we're talking about.
Well, I think we can postpone and--
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I just want to be clear that--
Then we get into discussing--
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. I just want to be clear that, that I think the guidelines are, I think he's done a good job putting together some solid guidelines, so I'd really encourage everyone to look at those and be ready, hopefully to, to act on this at the next meeting.
Okay. And that's--
And I just want to take a quick second.
I don't often say things like this. I, I can't help but be personally offended that you trust me to run a police department with a massive budget to make arrest decisions, to carry a gun, but I can't set basic guidelines for what parking tickets should be dismissed? I mean, you can discuss everyone at the council meeting if you want to. I, I don't care that much, but--
But Chris, if there's a basis, a, you know, a, a correct basis for, for executing it, then they should not be dismissed.
And I, I agree. So what's the problem?
So, but your criteria, your guidelines do not state that. Let's, let's wait till the next meeting--
Okay, I disagree, but I have to take a second to say I'm personally offended.
And Chris, well, and Chris, I just want to clarify, from my perspective, which is totally different than what the other counselors have expressed here, I'm, we have a new council, we have a new chairperson, that's Nick, who is now working as your liaison. And I feel that it's his responsibility to work with you to ensure that whatever these policies, procedures, guidelines, whatever you want to call them, are in some condition that are acceptable to the new council. So it's not so much that I'm postponing or kicking down the can to the next council meeting, it's because I want to make sure that we have general consensus among this body that's, you know, a different composition of folks.
Understood.
Super.
Okay, so that'll be on the February, possibly, agenda, February 13th. Okay, so next is consideration to submit, dismiss this parking ticket. And that was sent to council and, from Chris, right? You sent it? Did you want to review it with council a little? Does anybody--
I can read it if you--
Would you want to review it, Chris?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I summarize the interest of time?
Sure.
Okay.
Woman was visiting a house on Mahaska Court on November 4th, which was a game day in
the morning. She's a real estate agent, she stopped by, parked in the driveway, said she pulled the car out to take pictures of the house. Basically didn't realize that it was a game day that she couldn't park there, didn't see the signs. When she got back to the car, there was a ticket. She didn't intend to break the law, she realizes now is a game day, so she would appreciate it to be dismissed, I think. Is that a fair summary?
Could you just talk on this, your, the signage issue, too?
Just your, my opinion now, is that what you're saying?
Well, just what do you, so what she's saying about the signage and--
Yeah, oh yeah, she did just say that she, said an officer pointed out a little sign at the end of the cul-de-sac. Just looking at the address, I mean, she would have passed a sign coming in, said it's around about cul-de-sac. So I personally think it should stand.
Were you, were you the arresting officer? Or did you execute the ticket?
No.
The officer that did, you said she parked in the street. Did he ever ask her why she didn't park--
There was no one around.
Hmm?
There was no one around. It was just the car was parked in the street. We couldn't see her.
Oh, you didn't see her at all?
The car was just in the street. No, it was just a parking--
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Does council want to write a recommendation, one way or the other?
I'd like to know, where's the disclosure of the signage within proximity to this car? Part of her concern here is that the disclosure was so far away--
She would have passed it, as I said, it was, it's Mahaska Court, so it was on the right side, the house was on the right side, so she would have passed a sign and then parked 15 feet. It was, well, I'm not, yeah, within, just a right around the-- Yeah.
But it was visible to her. It did not have been?
Yeah, it would have been within 15 feet of her car, and she would have had to have passed that sign.
And what does the sign say?
No parking game days, or days that the University of Iowa has home games. It is a small, small sign, to be fair, it's like a little square one under the, no parking sign.
Was it, what type of a game day was it? It doesn't sound like it was a morning game day.
It was a evening.
So probably the time she stopped by, there was hardly anybody there.
True, that is true.
Okay. Does that change your recommendation?
No.
So your recommendation is to stand by this ticket?
Yep. I mean, I think I'm agreeing with Dottie in that sense. I mean, compassion might say she shouldn't get the ticket, but it's, she broke the law. I, probable cause exists for the ticket, so.
Nick, did you see the sign? Was it publicly visible or not?
I'm, I'm deferring to the chief on, on that. I asked, we, we talked about it, he went and observed it again after we had talked about it, and I'm deferring to his report on that.
Does, okay, Dottie wants to have the ticket stand. And Lisa, are you still considering?
Chris, you said you wanted the ticket to stand. The ticket should stand.
And Sylvia, have you decided?
Well, I'm going to go with the consensus of the council.
And you do, too, Nick? Okay, the ticket will stand.
What is the ticket expense on this?
Forty-five, because it's a game day.
If it was a non-game day, what would the ticket price be?
Twenty.
Is there--
Oh, no.
Well, here, circumstantially, if it's a game day and it was a night game, there's hardly any cars around that time.
Luck of the draw. It stands, that's my view.
Nick, what's your opinion on that? From 45 to 20. Jerry was up here at the last quarter asking to have his $20 one waived. I'm wondering if there's an interest in, in, you know, moving it from 45 to 20 at minimum. She still gets her ticket, but given the circumstances that it was probably a lot earlier than game day, where you have tons of cars parked everywhere, that would have been a visual--
Can I just add one quick thing?
Go ahead.
One, one reason we do enforce it aggressively on game days, as soon as you have one car there, everyone thinks that's a parking spot, and the street is full, and you can't see the fire hydrants, and--
Okay, all right.
And it's a cul-de-sac also, so it--
Yeah, and we, I fail, I was negligent in mentioning, I mean, we did get complaints from residents that cars were parked there on game days--
That's true.
--in that block.
I know that you have, and I forwarded them to you.
Yeah.
So, all right. All right, it stands.
Thank you. Okay, we've done that under police report, and then we have discussion to change the sergeant position from hourly to salaried.
Do you want--
And did you want to talk about that?
Do you want me to talk about it first, or?
Yeah, why don't you talk?
Okay. It's fairly common in departments, I talked to North Liberty, Iowa City, University. The supervisory staff is usually salaried, not hourly. North Liberty being the next smallest, next one larger, size larger than us in agencies in Johnson County. Their second-in-command is salaried. I'm just asking that the, excuse me, the sergeant position be a salaried position instead of hourly. That could actually save the city a lot of money. I'm not entirely sure why the sergeant who's standing over there is willing to do this. This was his idea. He's going to make a lot less money doing this, but this was his idea. You know, right now, he's, he's still making the entry-level officer salary of 19 an hour, and with on-call time, overtime, and doing all the managerial administrative stuff that he does for me, he would already make more than I am as chief this year. So I'm asking that we make him salaried. And this, I don't know if this should be voted on tonight, but I wanted to bring it up because it might be a big, I didn't know if it was going to be a budget thing, so it was on everybody's radar.
Since he's here, maybe he'd like to speak to the council, or council would like to hear from him.
Yeah, I may have a few, a few words before that, too. You know, I, I think that, you know, my concern when this idea was raised was just accountability to the chief. You know, that if you are getting paid overtime, you may have, you know, more motivation to work those extra hours, and if all of a sudden you're salaried, then it might be less motivation to work the extra hours. And just concerns about, you know, follow-through and, you know, the pay is set, no matter what you do, what hours you work, that sort of thing. And in response to those concerns, I, I was, you know, I was comforted by the chief's explanation that that is not a concern to him. And, and that was important to me, to know that the person who it's going to matter most to from a supervisory standpoint was not concerned about it. You know, I also think he has, it sounds like he has supervisory duties, it sounds like he will be, he, being second-in-command, if, you know, if the chief is sick, if the chief is on vacation, if, you know, a lot of circumstances would take the chief out of commission, he would be the one acting as chief at that point. And I think, you know, that was a factor for me. Also, I, you know, we've had, we've had talented people come through the police department, even though, as the chief pointed out, this doesn't seem to be a pay raise, it seems to be maybe a pay cut. It, it's, I think it's appealing, it provides some, you know, stability, and, you know, maybe some, I don't know, prestige or whatever the word would be. And, and I think it's, it's a small price to pay, or maybe we're saving money by offering something that maybe would be a tool to keep good employees with the police department. And so for those reasons, that's, that's why I also don't know if this is something we would be voting on, or just something to get feedback from council on initially. But, but those are kind of my thoughts when, when ra, when the issue is raised.
Chris, from my perspective, now that I opened up the year by being the finance chair, I, I want to applaud you for having the judgment to explore having a, a backup personnel, that if anything happens to you, we do have someone who can man, man the helm of the department. My question to you is, where is this, our budget, is this all well within your budget at this time?
Yeah.
Or are you asking for a budget increase?
No. It, it would save me money in my budget.
Okay, all right.
It's, I guess that was one of the questions for council, is, he's, he's been promoted, he is sergeant, but he's still making officer pay. There was some discussion that that had to be done within the next budget. I would certainly not like to make him wait until the next budget to implement this, if the council so wishes. And I, I have room within it, as I said, it saves me money to do it in this, the FY18, is that where we're in now? In, not the budget we're working on proposing, but in the current budget. So if it's possible to be approved, I would appreciate that.
I'd like to see those figures, if we can please do that, yeah.
The figures of?
Of your, of your current budget increase to, to officer pay? No, to non-officer pay, would be sergeant pay.
I mean, I can tell you the amount that I would like it to be. I'm, I'm asking for 53.
It's, you know, I'd rather separately handle it, Chris.
Oh, okay. You want to bring it up at a budget?
Yep.
Okay, just not understand the question.
Twenty-third.
Okay. Because most, I mean, all the information is already in Lori's report and is always sent out, so I didn't know what the question was.
Doesn't hurt to send it out to us again on the 23rd.
Okay.
We'll do then. Thank you.
Okay, and then the second part of that was discussion on police salary and wage scales.
We can, does it add that? Or how do you want to bring it up?
It might be worth bringing up.
Yeah.
You know, these, these two issues were, you know, kind of brought as, you know, package deal, and I think the council has the scale that was sent out there.
I believe so. I believe so. I've sent it out before if it didn't go up this time.
But so the same discussion was had about, you know, whether a pay scale should be something that is just put into place, you know, that if, you know, based on if everyone has, has this, you know, if you've served a certain number of months, then you would receive a certain level of pay. And, you know, I think the discussion was that, you know, some employees would be employees you want to keep around, but might not be progressing as quickly as others, and so I think we want the council to see the pay scale as maybe advisory, but that it would not, I think the decision was made that it would not be brought to the council as something that we're asking the council to accept as, as an automatic, so nothing would change in regard to the pay scale. It's just some data, I guess, that, you know, the chief has put together to show what he has in mind, but understanding that it's, you know, when he comes to the council for requests for pay increases, it's not, obviously, it's not going to be automatic, and it might be different based on his assessment of how that individual employee is doing at the time.
Yeah, use it as a reference point for what I would expect.
For our next meeting on the 23rd, I'd like a follow-up on this discussion topic in writing so I can understand it. What's the status quo right now with respect to salary? What determines an increase or a decrease or continues neutral? And what is the advantages or disadvantage of adopting a wage scales? So a small summary report of that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Ahead of the meeting, thank you.
Yeah, and to be clear, I, I don't think there's a request at this point to adopt a wage scale, but if council is interested in that idea, you know, that would be something we could discuss further.
I need to read about it first and then, and then try to figure out where, what to do next. I don't know, anybody else?
Nate, if you want to speak to the council, you can, but if you don't want to speak to the council, that's fine. Well, I mean, you really have to talk in the microphone if you really want to speak. Okay. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Nate.
So then we have...
Actually, could I ask a couple of quick questions? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Just, so, so you understand that this could mean you end up earning less? But it's appealing for you to have a salary? That seems to be a positive for you?
It is. For example, without going into a whole lot of detail, we had an incident last night that I came in for it for a couple of hours. That happens on a semi-routine basis. I don't always include that in my time sheets now, if I come in to help an officer for a couple of hours. I don't put down for overtime for every minute that I come in to help Chris with something or anything else. So that allows me some more flexibility and I'm already working, as he said, through overtime in almost every paycheck as it is now. So that allows me the flexibility to do that and be able to have those adjustable hours to come in and help without costing the city the extra money. It just, it works out. In the long run, it allows us to do some more things within the department, allocate that money elsewhere, that we can use it for other programs that we want to offer.
So you can, you consider it a benefit that would make you want to stay at the position potentially longer?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
It's good to know, thank you. Now we'll go to discussion on, oh, yes, Nick, you wanted to discuss some protocol for residents to contact police personnel, like notification of extended parking on city streets.
Yeah, so, so this is tied to the parking, but it's also tied to other things. You know, I think there potentially is confusion in the community about the parking issue and that they can call up and say, hey, I have an issue, I need to park on the street for a little while. And based on the guidelines that, that the, that the chief has sent out, that would, if, if the mess, even if the message is left and no one answers, my understanding is that would be an excuse that he would take into account in, under the guidelines. But also, I think just, we, we were talking about maybe materials that we could get out to the community, you know, maybe, you know, some numbers, maybe even a phone tree to understand the phone system. I, I feel like there's not a full understanding of that in the community. We wanted to bring it up to council, too, because there's some ideas of, you know, maybe this would be, you know, a magnet that would be distributed or something like that. It seems pretty important. You know, the, the police department is a big part of our budget, and making sure people understand how to use it, I think, would be a big, a big asset. And so I was just curious if any other council members had ideas or had heard concerns or, or anything like that. So I just wanted to throw that idea out for that reason.
I do want to say that one of my goals in the next few months is a city newsletter. That wasn't, usually when we have an election, a new election, get a city newsletter so they know how to contact new council. And then I think that would be a good area to put that in. And also, I researched this over 2017 and looked at a nice little concise flyer, and I looked at the city of Tiffin, and they had a very nice one that folded, and I thought we could put it in the entryway of the office, too, so it's available. And I'd been talking to Lisa Moore about working with me, because she's, she's good with the computer, and I, and I was thinking that's one way, but I'm, you know, but putting on the, I think it's a very good idea to have some kind of communication, it seems to be lost. Was somebody raising their hand over there? Okay, no. But that's where I was thinking was the city newsletter. That has not gone out. It didn't go out in 16, when it should have, and so I think it needs to go out in 18 for sure.
I would ask for that, that those numbers be included in, just, in, maybe a little blurb about, you know, how, if you call this number, what happens, if you call that number, what happens, and how dispatch, Johnson County Dispatch relates to all of it.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea.
So why don't we include that information on the website for the police department?
It, it's there, it's been there for a long time, but I think mailers are something that would get to people that aren't...
It's there, it's just...
It's a website.
Yeah.
I think people don't maybe think of, of, you know, how it would work and get on there and...
But I think this is segueing into a bigger issue, which I think, Dottie, you have on the agenda tonight.
Or one problem that citizens have expressed to me is that when they call, often there isn't a policeman to answer, and then it goes down to the sheriff's office.
Dispatch.
And so, you know, it should be simpler than that, so that they can talk to somebody.
It, it's pretty simple. People, I think people aren't understanding, as Nick said. I mean, there, there is no phone that we answer. I mean, it, it goes to the Johnson County Dispatch, which is to everyone. And then there's a, a simple phone tree that gets to us, but...
Often they don't know what the caller's talking about.
The dispatch center, you mean? We can talk later, I didn't call that.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate you being involved with this. Maybe we'll bounce off kind of the way we're going to describe it, and maybe...
I mean, getting, getting hold of the correct officer to, you know, answer the question is important.
Exactly, exactly. That's what we want to work on and really making that extremely easy for people to, to understand.
If I may interject, they also call me if they're unable to get a hold of an officer, so if they can't follow the phone tree, which is fairly simple, then they pick the option to get to me.
And then I, I have one more point, kind of on the same bullet point, if, if no one has it. So the other issue that involves parking that came up, as, as, as the council knows, someone contacted, emailed the council about parking time limits, and that kind of ties into the parking ticket issue where it seems like there may be kind of, in, in a lot of community members' minds, arbitrary time limits for how long you can park on one street and how long you can park on another. And I, I'd just be curious if the other council members have heard this, and, and maybe a way that we can either standardize it, or, you know, if, if there's a street where everybody is thinking we want two hours instead of one hour, for example, if, if maybe some sort of showing from that street would be influential for the, for the council to maybe change that.
I'm in charge of streets and sidewalks this, this term. And so we have a multiplicity of problems that we're going to standardize and we're going to have rules so that there's no question about things. So I'm meeting with Josiah this week. We're going to review the criteria and the ordinances for street parking in the city. And we're going to see what, what is reasonable, what drives those decisions, and we're going to set some new parameters.
And I would encourage you bringing that to council and having public input about that, too.
Well, I think we're going to decide what we feel is best and safest, and at that point, we will bring it to council. But this is something that's not arbitrary. We have very old streets and sidewalks. Everything is crumbling. The infrastructure is, is really a problem. The sewers are breaking, and we have to have structure and process so that, that it's consistent and we know where we're headed. There's not going to be any arbitrary or capricious decision-making. So I just wanted to say that about the streets and sidewalks. So we're going to look at the size and the width, and there are parts of the city like North Sunset where I don't believe there are even any curbs, so you have, you know, really serious issues. The other thing I wanted to discuss is the Rotary Park. Excuse me. I secured a grant from Rotary to begin to put a new look on the Triangle Park. And we also received money from the developers of the hotel to add to the development. It's right on Melrose scape, and in the vision plan, the city, the citizens over a period of a year identified the Melrose Avenue, Melrose scape as the primary part of the city to, to clean up, so to speak, and, and address in terms of modernizing it. And the second priority was the Triangle Park. And so those are some of my goals. So we'll be working on that immediately as soon as the snow leaves. And I think that is about all I have at this point about streets and sidewalks. Obviously, we have many, many, many issues. And it will be nice to finally see a little money coming into the city so that we can address the age-old problems that we have endured.
Any questions or comments for Dottie? She went right into her streets and sidewalks report, very nicely. Thank you, Dottie. Did that, did that help you too, Nick?
Yeah, I think, and I, I would just again suggest that you involve the chief on the discussions about parking, because I think there, you know, when you raise safety issues, he has a lot of good insights that I've, I've heard from him on that.
We're, we're going to look at the city and see what is safe and reasonable.
Okay, thank you. So Josiah, I know you have an important report that you were talking about in your written report, anyway.
So I noted on there, it's kind of a standing item about the Iowa City's fiber project they're planning on Melrose. And I noted we haven't heard anything. I did get in touch with them this week, and they are still working on it, still working on their design, they're still planning to get that done this year. And so I, I just checked in to see what was going on and reminded them we need to get the 2080 agreement, part of that drafted and reviewed and, and moving, so I'm anticipating hearing something back in the next few weeks on that end.
And what again is the city, what's our, what's our trade-off here?
Good question. So I'm looking to get something back from them on what their plans are and what the 2080 agreement they're proposing is, and so we can start looking at it.
Okay, I, I think for starters, we need to make sure that we secure an easement and access to land so that we can place our westbound entry signage that the envision, that the vision program has well-articulated as needed, so that we can, you know, demarc our city. So I think we communicated that from the last council, but I think from this council, it'd be good to get consensus in that direction, because it's super important that we secure. If we give away 2080 access without us getting anything in return, we don't have any other land to place a nice signage for University Heights.
Well, and I, I wonder if the university project is going to impact it?
Do you have, yeah, do you have any input on the?
I don't have any update on that for the last several months, but that was also a project where it was communicated to them and we met that hey, this is something we might want to incorporate as part of that street work, is, is getting a spot for this sign.
And does that Iowa City cable project contemplate working and addressing also the, the potential changes that the, that the athletic club will bring in the future, or separate and apart?
It, it needs to, and, and again, that's why I want to get, get some documents from them.
Okay, all right, so, all right.
Because they, they're on, they would be on the north side, so yes, it'd be...
And you have access to the vision program schematics that were generated, right?
I do, yeah.
Okay, great.
The other item I wanted to touch on from the report is olive court improvements. What I've got drafted up here is a first cut or anticipated draft of a project development timeline for that project. And this, this envisions a timeline that includes several reviews and meetings and design through this year, starting in the next few weeks. Getting council feedback at a couple critical milestone dates. Like a schematic design, a 50% design, sort of a 90%, just checking in, and then getting council direction that at subsequent council meetings, you know, we're on board, we want to proceed this way, or making the decisions, really, on some of the choices that will surely come up. And, and so this is penciled out for a bid date later this year for construction to start the following spring, and, which is a ni, a nice date, sort of November. If we run into any issues or we need some time, a month, it still gives us that time. No one's really going to start in December, but, so we have a, a little bit of room to work with if we, if we need it, so.
So it would be spring of 2019.
Correct, yeah. And so I'm envisioning coming up sort of with this initial concepts, the schematic design, sort of a 25% sketch of, of really two options. One, a, a typical standard street section where you'd have everywhere else in town, and then another option, which would have stormwater quality features, which are leaning towards the permanent paved street option to get those in front of you, and then also talk about some of these tree considerations that are going on there. That's my plan. I'm, I definitely don't anticipate your need to provide comments right now, but I wanted to get it in front of you. I'll continue to work this way, and we've got plenty of council meetings coming up here, so.
The olive street improvement, olive court improvement. Does Jeff have any input in any of this, or is it just financial?
Could you talk a little louder in the microphone?
Well, she was, she was asking if Jeff Hendrickson, what his role is in the design of the project.
Right, okay.
My recollection is that his role is, is financial only, yeah. He's providing a contribution up to a certain number, which is about 95 at this point. That's up to 50%. So for example, if, if your project was 100,000, he would, he'd only pay 50%, but up, up to that number, so. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, like I said, continue on this schedule, and definitely feel free to get any feedback, but...
Josiah, does this olive court improvement contemplate Lemer as well?
Does not. It's from Melrose to the newly improved section of the city boundary line.
Okay.
Up to the white fence?
Yeah, wherever that city line is, up the top of the hill, yeah.
Okay. It's good to have this timeline, yeah.
I don't, I wasn't going to bring out anything else on the written report, but certainly entertaining question. I wasn't going to bring out anything else on the written report, but certainly entertaining questions.
Are there any other comments for Josiah? Okay. Okay, the sanitation report. I wanted to say quickly about snow removal report. I want, I wanted to, I talked to Mark Phelps about snow removal. And then he submitted his bill, so we're up to $12,093 as of the end of December. And it's very itemized. And he, when he came to University Heights, I was very impressed with his sand and salt and understanding of when to put it down and the chemistry of it and how it worked with the, you know, certain temperatures. And he's very good at it. And he said it was too cold to use it at times, it would be a waste. I feel like he's doing a good job for the city, that he knows when to go ahead and do it and when not to do it. And the last time he put an application on was, it seems like he said it was January 8th. It's not in this bill, but it's January 8th, which was yesterday, because that's when the thaw started. And he said, "I had to go around and sand salt the streets because then it would freeze up again." And he said, "Otherwise, there'd be a lot of glaze." And I just, I think it might be good to bring him in sometime if we ever have time to listen to him because with the new council and even with the current members, that he's very, very good at this. And so I asked him to send me some notes because there were some questions specifically about the barrels. And he has the salt barrels. They're sand-salt mixture. I said to you, Nick, they're sand. But there's, he said there is a component of salt in there, too. And, but it looks like sand. And they're at, there's one on the hill of Oak Crest and Sunset and one at Melrose on north side just before Sunset Light. And then there's one on Cozer East Side just before Melrose. And then on the George East Side at intersection of Cozer. And they're 50-pound barrels. And over the few years that he's been our contractor, he's revised it some. He said, "This is what's available to me. The only other thing I can use is big cardboard boxes." But he didn't think the council would want that. But what he's done is he's put lids on them with a chain and a hook so that the wind won't blow them off. And over the years, there's been, you know, used as trash bins. And what he's done is he put on the lid, he's put no trash. And then on the side, he puts sand only. And he does monitor these. And he said, "I looked at them the end of December, and I didn't see a problem with trash at the time." But he's aware of it and he does monitor them. And I know you had some concerns, Nick, about that. But, so that's what he said. He, oh yeah, he checks them frequently. And he said they weren't being used very much. That's the other thing he noted. He said, "You know, you can use them on your sidewalk, you can use them on the street." And they do cost $250 each. And we, so we have, so that's, you know, he, well, it's $1,500 total. So I don't know if, if they still can continue to use or if there's a big problem. But he can come and address the council, too, and get more information. What other things he said is, oh yeah, here's where he said it. "I scraped all the streets 1-8 and put down salt, January 8th. With this little bit of thaw, all roads are clear. But they will refreeze to ice tonight. And in the morning, the salt put down will eliminate any issues anywhere in town." And then he talked about a few issues, which I told Josiah about, like a manhole that he hit and that Josiah's going to put it on the list to be repaired. And he said, "Oh, I've got to give this to Chris. There are a few pictures of cars that haven't moved at all on Marietta Avenue since 12/21. The plates are expired on all of them. They may be abandoned. Can you have police check on this? And if they move around, I can do a better job of plowing." So I'll, I'll give you this so you can look at it and see if that's still an issue, if they're still there. And, but I just thought it would be good to have a nice report since we've had this snow. And I think he's been doing a pretty good job. He tries to address issues. And I haven't had a lot of complaints, other than he's not here yet, you know, or something. But they've been very minor. Have you had any issues that you know of, Chris? Because lots of times he'll check with the police. And, or you might call him and say the arterials need something.
Yeah, every time I've looked out to check on it, it's been good.
Yeah, I think he's very good.
That day was really heavy all day long. He was, they were working all day long?
Oh, when we got that snow all day long.
Yeah, when it's just snowing constantly.
Yeah, when that, that was fun. And so, I don't know. I, but, you know, you can contact him. He's very good about returning your calls and talking to him if you have an issue with him. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of a report about him. I know I'm not doing snow plows, but I thought this is a timely time to talk about it.
Could I ask briefly? So you're saying each one of those dumpsters costs the city $250?
Yeah, to put out bill.
Each year?
And, yeah.
And you're saying that they don't get used very often?
Well, right now, he doesn't see them getting used right now.
Who's supposed to use them?
Well, pedestrians or people. You see, they're on kind of slight inclines. So I've, I've used it when somebody had trouble on Oak Crest going up to that. And I saw that they were having an issue. And I said, "Here's, we can use this," you know? And, and you scoop in there and put it down? That's what it's used for, to give you traction on those hills. But people, when we had real icy areas, they put them on their sidewalks, on their driveways, you know? And they've, they've been used in the past. Have you experienced anybody using them, Chris?
I haven't seen anybody using them, but my bet would be they just don't know that they can. I mean, why wouldn't you want free salt for your sidewalk? Right?
Yeah.
I mean, why buy yourself? They probably just don't know it's, can be used for it.
Maybe in the newsletter thing that you?
Yeah, could we? I was going to say.
Another newsletter.
Can you send, can you circulate that email with the locations of those sand bins?
Yeah, I will.
I think Paul has a question.
Good idea. I meant to do that. Oh, there's a question? Welcome, Paul.
Welcome to new council.
Thank you.
I really like this new arrangement for me personally. I read a lot of lips. And when you're sitting face-to-face and messing with speakers all the time, it's just more humble jumble. And so this is a good arrangement for me.
Oh, good.
The reason I'm here is basically a question. With your snow removal contract, where it ends as regard to the snow that's plowed up along the side of the street? Lemer Court and Cozer and Melrose, when it thaws, all that moisture runs heat. And when it was below zero, the Cozer storm sewers were plowed shut. And there's no storm sewers on Lemer. So when it starts to melt, where's that water go? Well, this community has worked on volunteers for years and years. And I know you don't like that because of insurance and all the big-city stuff we have to deal with. But I want to stop volunteering from having to dig those storm sewers out. And Nick Lubenthal, the same way. For years, I put two blue reflectors up on each side of the street. So Nick and I at least know where to dig. Because other years, when this builds up with water from melting, you don't want to dig for 25 feet trying to find where the storm sewer is. So my question is, could an amendment or something be made to the snow con, contract? That the man that has the pleasure of plugging them up has the ability and pays for digging them out, so they're operational? This last snow is just a good example. The last four or five years, we've really had moderate snows. But if we get into a bad snow cycle, we don't have any place to push the snow. And then when it comes down to runoff, it floods these intersections. I've seen it so bad where the storm sewers don't handle it if they're plugged up and it runs in the lid of the sanitary sewer in my building and is backed up in our basement. And so I've got a lot of things that I want to, and I've been working with Josiah and with Greg and Jim. But I'm really concerned about what's going to happen with the Envision project and Olive Court. And especially the two underground services that are now served aerial-wise. And that's all supposed to be put underground. But you have no property to put the transformers on for this area to relocate this stuff. And so all of these things are coming in the next two or three years, and they're all coordinated. We're not getting any answers. They say they're removing the poles as far as with the hotel thing, but they don't show what they're going to do with them. And so I'm going to be back many more times. And I just want you to be aware of why I've come to all these meetings. It's better than watching television. But anyway, I'm trying to get more informed.
Or better than television?
It's mine.
And so, I mean, you come up with an idea and you're going to do this, and you say you're going to do it. But do you think out the logic of it? The gas main's going up one side of the sidewalk. The Intercontinental Telephone's going up the sidewalk on my side of the building. You got the water in the sewer. And where all these things are going to go and have to be relocated need to be decided now before it gets too far. It'll save you a lot of money in the long run instead of tearing up sidewalks that you just put in with one project or with the storm sewer. And so I'm not trying to burden you with any more than what you have. And I was working with Josiah and everything, but I don't hope the word ever got to you what's coming up, so.
Yeah, you've talked to me about it, I know. And I think it's good to remind all of us, the whole, the city council, about your issues. I'm thinking that I could talk to Mark Phelps, the snow contractor, because, you know, he does clearing some sidewalks. I could ask him about what it would cost to clear, to keep clear some of these, did you call it, storm sewers?
The ones by the flower bed and the ones right across the street. And Nick and I have taken care of it for years. And I don't mind.
I know, I know you have.
But at the same time, when it's below zero, I'm not going to be there. And so if he could incorporate it when he shovels the sidewalk at the flower bed or whatever.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring this to your attention.
Right, and I know the other issues. I know all you've gotten from the developers so far is, "We're going to work on it." Or, you know, "It's, it's going to be worked out." And I know you want more than that.
Right.
And I'll tell you, I'm going to miss the February meeting.
Oh. Thank you, Paul. Did you want to repeat to Paul? I was telling him a little bit about, you know, he addressed in the December meeting. Did you want to just say that, Josiah, about the streetlights? That's in your report. I was telling him some.
Paul had a comment at last month's meeting about the streetlight at Cozer, Golf View, Melrose. That light was, it's still the old-style light. So we did talk to Iowa City. Their streets department was agreeable to switching that out because they're doing the same sort of work, where they switch out lights in Iowa City to their LED fixture. So they were agreeable to do that when their, when their schedule allowed to come through. So that's, that's the plan. I don't know if it's been switched out. I was going to check it out tonight. And then, and then the other, the other, there's two traffic signal poles there. So we're looking at, can we add a second light? And as I noted in my report, I started that communication with Mid-American because their lines go right over the pole. So it's kind of an issue. You can't really stick a light up through there. So I'm trying to work with them to see if we can come up with something. But that's, I haven't, I haven't obviously pushed that out.
See, Paul, people are listening to you. It's moving along. It was a good idea about that LED light in that area. It's very dark during, during these late games.
Josiah, I?
That's, I don't, what we can check on it. There might be, there might be an option in that, in Mark Phelps' contract about hourly services for cleaning out snow and things like that, so.
I'm going to talk to you first.
Josiah, I did have a question on your report regarding the Sunset Ridership. Can you clarify what the terms outbound and inbound refer to? I just want to know which direction where the bus is heading. Is it outside of our?
When it's going south on Sunset, like out towards Benton, that's outbound to them. And then inbound is coming up on like the Grand View, Grand View Court side, heading north towards Melrose, which goes back into Iowa City.
So basically inbound areas of the city, and then outbound is exiting the city.
Yeah, inbound is all those east-side stops, and outbound is the west-side stops.
And then Lisa, you had a committee report.
It's a very long committee report. This is the first meeting for our new videographer, Steve Anderson. He's sitting back there. We have new email accounts for everyone and for the council. And we'll be using Google Drive in 2018 to be more efficient in sharing documents. And I would like to thank Mike Haverkamp, who is also sitting back there and still doing a lot of the e-government as we're making the transition with things only Mike knows, so.
Any questions for Lisa? Thank you. Or Mike, huh? Okay, are there any announcements from anyone?
Sorry, you're going to kill me? One really fast thing?
Sure.
I think it's just funny. Our, I think our police website's actually pretty successful because we have tons of people from Ohio calling, asking how to pay their University Heights, Ohio parking tickets and such. Thought people would enjoy that.
Yeah, we know about University Heights, Ohio. Yeah, we do. So Chris, we're thinking about going, using your office for, to go into closed session. So there's a proposal to meet in closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 2151. Is that J? To discuss the possible purchase of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the city would have to pay for that property. So is there a motion?
A motion?
Motion by Sylvia, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. And what's roll call vote?
Herbold.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Carried.
Okay, so we will convene to the police so everyone else can sit here. And then they can turn off the tape for a few minutes. Thank you. Sign, Mike? Okay, so we'll now reconvene to open session and discussion and possible action regarding closed session matter. And Sylvia, you wanted to follow up?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, yes. We're done with that item.
Okay. Have that, Steve?
That's it.
We're good. Okay, there's, is there any motion, any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everybody, for staying, and thanks, council.
All right, so I will follow up and loop you in on that.
Yeah, do. And I, I've looked about three times, but I'll look again. I don't.
Oh, okay.
No, that's fine. So how do we help tear all this down so that everybody can go home by 10:45?